Seeing a quorum of voting members, I call the August 20 Student Achievement Committee of the whole meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
In the United States of America, in the two, three republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Happy first day, everybody. I'm super excited. You just can't see my little feet. Treasurer Wagner, would you please call the attendance roll?
I will. Mr. Craig?
Here.
Mr. Crossitt?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
Vice President Bolton?
President Moffett?
Here. Let's jump right into it. Superintendent Murphy, please introduce our first presentation.
Happy to do so. So, over the summer, we have been working really hard on reviewing our strategic plan and our goals and guardrails because we know that some of them will expire this school year. Some of them, we have met the target and some, we have not. And so, we began putting together a presentation for you that initially was rather lengthy, we understand, but we've cut that down and want to try to explain and share with you and ask your support for some adjustments with the goals, either extending them or making some adjustments. And we want to provide you the rationale. And what we're hoping from for you is that there be some response after you had a chance to really review and look at where we are with the strategic plan and give us your feedback on how to move forward throughout the school year. So, Mike Turner is here to begin that presentation. We also invited Amanda Vargo for historical perspective, rather, on data that has been used in the past. So, if there are any questions she may be able to help with. Mike Turner.
Thank you Superintendent Murphy. Thank you Superintendent Murphy and welcome, everybody. I'm happy to be here. It's not on? Can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay. I'll talk really loud. Thank you Superintendent Murphy, Treasurer Wagner, and Board President Moffett, and all other board members. Just happy to be here today. We have two presentations. The first one strictly is on our strategic plan goals. If you will remember, when the strategic plan was written, it started in 2023 and then ends in 2027. So, this first slide that we have, the next slide, please, strictly looks at Goal One. And when that was written, it obviously deals with third graders proficient in reading on the Ohio State test. The beginning benchmark was 47.5% in June of 2023, and the goal that was set is that by June 2027, that would be at 61%. So, looking at the actual expected data, and because the report card has not been released yet, that number is not being shared specifically, but we already know that the target that was set for 2025, a 51% proficiency, will be exceeded. So, as Superintendent Murphy said in several meetings with the senior leadership team, the desire would be to set a new goal for the end of this school year, 2026, of 60.7% proficiency, and then a goal for the end of the strategic plan for 64%. So, that's Goal One. Goal Two deals specifically with a gap in reading proficiency on the sixth grade test between white students and three subgroups, black, Hispanic, and multiracial. So, the targets were set to go from 24 to 27. There is a recommendation in this one because there is a pretty large variance between white students and each of those three subgroups. In other words, there's not an equal gap between black and white, Hispanic and white, and multiracial and white. So, there is the recommendation that this be split into three subgoals so that the gaps between white students and those three subgroups can be better addressed. Again, do not have that final data yet, but the desire would be to have the approval at some point to split that into three subgoals. So, still keep it as Goal Two, but we would have 2A, 2B, and 2C that would address the gap between white, black, white, Hispanic, and white, multiracial. Goal Three, more good news here. The Algebra One goal that was set at 40% for this group that just took the test, and again, this is first time Algebra One test takers. We already know that that target will be exceeded. So, the desire would be to set a new goal of 52% for this year's first time test takers, and then at the end of the 26, 27 school year, have a goal of 57% for that because the great news is, we know that that target will be exceeded. Goal Four deals with percent of black, Hispanic, and multiracial students with college credit plus credit or workforce credential. Recommendation would be to keep this one the same, although when we get to the interim goals in the next presentation, there is a slight change in the interims that will be recommended. And then Goal Five is relating to graduation, and the desire would be to leave those targets the same. So, to summarize all of that with two or three of those goals, the ask is that they be upped in two of those, and then the one for gap closing, that it be broken down very specifically by the subgroups because it's really too general as a goal, and it's not giving justice to the variance between the differing subgroups. So, that's the end of the presentation that relates strictly to the strategic goals which were written for the period of 2023 to 2027.
Okay, board members, do we have any questions? Board Member Craig?
Just two quick thoughts on this. One is that I think it's great to see that, you know, the work for the last couple of years that we've been, that the students have been putting in, quite honestly, and the teachers and folks who have been supporting them, parents, is making a difference. So, I mean, I think the Algebra numbers, one, it to me, it's my alarm because it's part of getting you to graduation, right, and it's on track to getting you to a lot of the apprenticeship programs and that type of deal as well. The only concern I would have with number two is just that part of the reason we grouped all of those together is because we saw the necessity of not recognizing them individually. And part of that was because we wanted to make sure that things that we were doing were going to be successful for each group. And so, in some ways, if we're breaking them apart and they're only successful for one but not another, it's still not really achieving the goal of addressing the barriers and the challenges that are faced by some of our minority groups. I do think it's worthwhile to say, if that was an interim goal, to look at those in interim fashion and say, for your interim goals, you wanted to look at these individual numbers as they go over a period of time. But the full goal, to me, I mean, I think that was part of the board's point, was that we didn't want to just focus on one group or one without recognizing that some of those same challenges are faced by others. And so, that would be my only suggestion, would just maybe using the interim goal as the way of breaking those apart rather than having a separate actual full goal.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm also going to say, board members, we, this presentation was a lot longer. And so, you received via email, a lengthy historical perspective of these goals and guardrails. What has been boiled down is a more succinct and organized version of this. So, the first time that the board members have seen it has been a couple of days ago. So, in all fairness and honesty, I shared with the administration, this took us a year to do, a couple of years ago. I think it was a little traumatic because it was, it was a lot. We did, we took a lot of time to do this. And we also are going to continue to review this for the next few board meetings so that we get this where we need it to be. And we may have to revisit some of our planning and getting here, just so you know, because there were, if I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, my colleagues, we had to have five goals. We could only have five goals. And the, where the disaggregation comes is in the interim guardrails and goals for the administration. So, the goal wouldn't be able to change, but the superintendent would be able to adjust the guardrails and the interim goals. Is that right? Am I saying this correctly?
Yeah. I mean, we could always amend a goal if the board still chose. What the superintendent has within her authority to do is adjust her interim goals.
Right.
To make it work.
Right. I thought that, too. Yes, ma'am. Board Member Weinberg?
I was just going to say, thank you, Board Member Craig, for bringing that up. In terms of Goal Two, I would probably go with not recommending that you split the goal into the subcategories. I think, like he stated, when we created that, we wanted those individual groups to stay together. So, that would be my input on that particular goal.
Board Member Matt?
Yes. Thank you for the presentation. I do have a question about Goal One for the third graders being proficient in the Ohio State reading test. So, based off what is presented here, recognizing that we are exceeding the annual targets, and the recommendation is to increase that. But I am concerned, and I don't have all of the data right on hand, but if I'm not mistaken, for last year, the annual target, while we surpassed it, we were at 57%. And I think for this particular year, we were about 55 or so percent, or 54%, I think. So, we're surpassing the target, but we're still seeing a decline, or we were seeing a decline with third grade proficiency. And so, I'm curious to know, have we investigated what is occurring there in terms of that decrease in their actual proficiency level?
So, what we've been doing as a senior leadership team around the curriculum areas in terms of creating what will our instructional plan look like, what will the professional development for that instructional plan look like? As we were discussing these goals, we've also discussed what are our strategies going to be moving forward in order to make sure that we are exceeding what our targets are as we continue down this pathway. So, part of it is getting clarity around where you, as a board, would like to see us go. And this is our introductory attempt at just opening that conversation. So, we are open clearly to the feedback. You are absolutely right. There was a slight, there will be a slight decrease in where we want it and hope to be, but I feel moving forward, we'll have a much more cohesive plan across the board. We have the deputy scheduled to present, I think it's in maybe two board meetings, what that plan is.
Okay. Thank you for that. What I, what would be helpful for me as it relates to this one specifically is being provided with more context around what the root causes are in terms of that decrease or that decline in this area, and then also what the recommendation is in terms of that comprehensive plan. Ultimately, because what I don't want to, what I don't want us to do is, if we're seeing some decline or regression in that area, is for us to change what the target is and not fully have identified, you know, what the challenges are to help us move forward.
Thank you. Board Member Lindy?
Thank you. I think this is a really good and important conversation. I had a couple, I had a question or two, and then a thought about process. Could we go back to the Goal Three slide for just a second? I may be looking at the wrong version of the data, and I don't think, we don't have our final official results for school year 25 yet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Great. The last data I have shows us for Algebra One at 39%. This is showing 40%.
That's actually the target that was set in the strategic plan. That is not the reality of the scores. This came directly from a strategic plan document. So, that is the target that the board and the previous administration set in the strategic plan.
Right.
So, those are not real numbers.
I'm with you. It just says, target has been exceeded.
Meaning that the expectation is, when the final data is released, the target or the actual data would be above the 40%.
Even though the number we currently have is lower than 40%.
This is for the class of 2025, that group that just took the test.
The number, yeah, I could be wrong. The number I received earlier said 39. And so, I'm trying to understand why this says, we've met it and the goal is 40.
Yeah. Let Amanda speak to that. She's the...
So, that is the spring release number, which includes all of the Algebra One retesters. What counts for accountability purposes for the report card and what the goal is written around is all first time test takers. And when you remove all those retesters, the number is significantly higher. And the not final, but near final number that we have is, we'll exceed that target. So, that 39% was the spring release data, including all the retesters that tested during the spring.
My intuition, first of all, thank you. Very helpful.
Thanks.
My intuition would be that the retesters would bring the score up because they're taking it for a second time. But that's not true. Retesters bring it down.
Yeah. Except, yeah. And the actual, I totally understand what you're saying, but going strictly on the way the strategic plan goal was written, it's a percentage of first time Algebra One test takers? And so, that's the data that will be released soon that we know should exceed the target.
I think, um, thank you, Mr. Turner, and thank you, Ms. Vargo. You both know more about this than I do, so I want to be, have some humility about all of this. I think, ideally, the more time they spend with us and the more times they take the test, the better they would do. So, there is a question there about why that's going down that would be worth considering at some point. I think, like, to zoom out for a second, at the May meeting, I had to look this up to make sure I was remembering this correctly. I remember a slide that claimed that we had, that we were on track to meet a target that we had already missed. I don't know if people remember this, but there was a slide, this is for Guardrail 3C, and there was a goal of hitting 80% by May 25. We had a Spring 25 number of 72. And the slide in bright green said, "We're on track," you know. And so, I think that plus, I just, I have some, I want to be really sure that we can be confident in the numbers that we're seeing and that everything hangs together. I think that was one reflection.
Great point.
I think this, the, the second thing, though, is, I think, the more important point, which is that in the coming months, there's going to be a naturally occurring opportunity to tie a bunch of things together that I think we should take advantage of, and that is the superintendent's evaluation, because we're going to be voting on what the targets should be for school year 25, 26. That's the time, I think, when we should make these kinds of decisions, because whatever those goals are, they should be the ones we're holding the superintendent accountable for. To be able to do that really well, we need to have official final numbers on where we landed. I think it's entirely appropriate and a really good idea to take a look at the goals and guardrails and ask, is this still the right stuff? Are these still the right targets? And I think the time to start thinking about that is now. And this is great. That's why I really, I, I want to make sure I say publicly that I really appreciate the thought and reporting. I know, Ms. Vargo, you and your team do on this, and it's incredibly helpful. So, please don't take any of my questions as anything other than appreciation. I've had a mix of experiences, and I want us to be, I want us to have thoughtful, meaningful targets as we go into the next school year. And so, yeah, my, you were asking earlier about, you know, decisions we might make on Monday versus decisions we might make today. I think the time to make those decisions is when we finalize the targets for the superintendent's evaluation. And then whatever rewriting we do of our goals and guardrails, that they be aligned to that process. And again, I don't think we can really do that well until we have the final data from last school year.
So, thank you. Let me also just share that this process, when we initiated it, when we initiated this process many years ago, took time to do. It was not done in a vacuum. It was not done in a month. It was done over months. The attempt at the, I appreciate the administration for rising this to our cows, which I have changed into being most all things academic, to start this process in August lends itself to what one of my colleagues shared in wanting to get ahead of things early so that we're not rushed with having to do these types of decisions in a vacuum. And so, we recognized in putting this agenda together that we don't have all of the data. But the, but we do also, we also did talk about the superintendent's evaluation being in October. She would like to have some idea of what the board is thinking because she has established goals for her team already. And so, we have to establish her goals, but she's already established goals for her team based off of some of this that she's proposing. So, that was the reason for all of this, getting us to kind of start thinking one mind. I would like to see more data, more historical data, to Board Member Map's point. I do think we should discuss this at our retreat in October, but unfortunately, we got a lot going on in October. We got, we got the superintendent evaluation in October. We've got a budget that we're talking about. We've got changes coming down from the state. So, it will be very busy, but we can do it, and we can start now, which is the point of this, in working on this. When will we see the final data from the state?
Mid-September.
So, this is on our agenda. It, I may have given a false impression when I told the board members that this is on the agenda for a vote. We can only vote during business meetings. So, this is on the August 25 agenda for us to discuss. If everyone says, hey, we really think that this is a good goal, let's just make that set, we would be doing that on the 25th. But we don't have to. But we will see this every board meeting now for the next few months under old business because we are going to be able to get to some resolution. And if we find ourselves there, then that's going to be great. If we don't, we're going to continue these discussions until we have gone through the retreat, finalized these goals, interim guardrails, and agreed on those things. So, it was really just an attempt to kind of put everybody in the same space because we have to do that publicly. So, just wanted to be able to be honest and open. This came up as we were addressing the Cal agenda. So, this was nothing planned, but the superintendent said, hey, I kind of want to get ahead on these goals. Additionally, we, we gave latitude to the superintendent last year to be able to adjust these if needed. So, this is just the time that she's doing this amongst trying to balance the budget and all that other stuff. So, you will see it again. I will ask, I don't know if we can do formal assignments right now, but we need some historical data. So, if we could get, if I would like historical data. So, how did we get to here? It was a little traumatizing, so we may have to go back historically, but I'd like to see some historical data so that I can look at trends. How did we get that five, plus five percentage points is where we're going to stick to? I want to see that particular data. I want to see that particular data, I think, to Board Member Map's point, so that we can look at how we're here to, I think we can maybe potentially be more aggressive than the, than the 5%. You know, that's where we've been going, but 50% is just not good in the broader picture. It's movement, but it's not good in the broader picture. So I'd like for us to have that data at our retreat so we could maybe get some, bring the, all of our board members to one like mind and then move forward with some attainable goals that are a little aggressive, but that are achievable for the team. Board Member Craig?
I just, as a, just a point of clarity, the targets were things that were set by either the administration or by us. So whether it's the goal target or the interim goal targets, so like the 5% kind of idea of growth was set by the administration as the goals. I think it'd be helpful, though, to see where that path has gone to, Board Member Map's point. If we had progression and then we have a year where we don't have progression, it's helpful to see, you know, where we go as far as whether or not progression again will be a true growth point or will this, you know, is this an aberration or is this a new pattern? So in that sense, what we used to see with, in some ways, with the reporting out was the like historical time, you know, the time data. So we could see the comparison because it also gives us an idea of where that growth is progressed from. Because we were also in the midst of coming out of, just coming out of COVID, so some of those numbers were extremely low and some of those numbers have grown pretty quickly, which is great to see. But it is, it is helpful sometimes to see the actual numbers in that historic context that will inform kind of where the new numbers and new goals and new interim goals could go forward to.
Board Member Lindy?
Thanks. I think, I just want to start by saying that feels like a great topic, like good use of time in a committee of the whole on student achievement to talk about all these things. So really appreciate that. It's a great, great piece of time. I wanted to go back to something from a moment ago about the goals already being set for other administrators. Superintendent, is that, I see you shaking your head. I can't, I'm open, what's the context?
So administration across the board, so our directors, their direct reports, those goals are coming due. They work with their supervisors to create their goals. They haven't had them set yet. But generally speaking, they're due by the end of August. They have their mid-year at December. So what I was trying to do is get an understanding so that they understand where we as a district are trying to go, of course, which is what everybody's saying here, so that they can level up their work to these goals and guardrails too, which then informs my discussion with you about my opinion about the goals and guardrails and what should be specifically my goals as superintendent. So there's a whole process for the organization to get to where you want to be, what you just pointed out about needing to have the discussion with me, which we have to wait for September. And so what we are having conversation about is based on what we know, based on what we've seen and we shared with you in the spring, where do we think we can land? I think these can continually be adjusted because if we should happen to land higher than where we believe we are based on the spring, so be it. That's fantastic. But this is our best effort in looking at the trend and what we did two years ago, how much we gained or where we fell back over the last three years. We can bring that to you because that is exactly what we've looked at to get to this 5% here or there. So yes, so this is a leveling up. And if there is no decision soon, I get it, but then that then impacts the rest of the organization in terms of getting us to the goals as a whole.
Makes sense. And I think, again, really healthy, good, important topic for us to talk about. I think in this, we don't have Ms. Bolton tonight, so I am shockingly the longest tenured board member here, which is a strange feeling. But in my, in my time here, this is, this is a first, in my experience, for trying to ladder up and down goals like this in a way that is timed with how we actually did last year-
Yes.
-in terms of student outcomes. The fact that we are having this conversation and we're having it now, I think is a win. I know we don't know exactly where we're going to go, what we're going to do yet, but we're having the right conversation. We're having the conversation at the right time about the right set of things. And so I just want to say that out loud, thank everybody who's helped us get here. And this is a first time we've done this. I also think that some of this push-pull is healthy, where I think there's going to be a bottoms-up version of what leaders in the district are thinking they can do. There should also be a top-down version of what we as representatives of the community think that parents and families and taxpayers are asking for. And I think that a good landing point will likely be somewhere in between those two places. The thing I would advocate, one of the things I would advocate for as strongly as I can, and I remember like I checked, I appreciate council's office on this point. I can't remember if this was a conversation in policy committee or in an email, I don't remember. But I do remember checking with council about whether there were any kind of hard constraints about the timing of administrative goal setting, either from a CBA or from state law. And the answer, as I understand it, was no. But if I'm missing that, please tell me. But that we do have flexibility in terms, like we decide. We, the CBS administration and board decide when those goals are due. So I think, I empathize and agree with the need to get people clarity quickly so that we can, they can start their year and get the most out of the time that they have. And I think there will be a different level of alignment and clarity that we can have if those staff members are working backwards from goals that we've approved as a board. And so I, there's no perfect way to square that circle because those things pull in different directions. The thing I want to advocate for is that as you leave the district, you create some space for people to firm up some of their goals on the other side of the conversation we're going to need to have in October around what your goals are for the year. I think preserving some room to move for people after that's locked down is just going to create so much more alignment and allow us to have a bigger impact for the community. I've talked forever, I'm sorry. I'd love to know what you think.
I definitely agree, and I appreciate everything that you said. I just want to add one more caveat that is aligned to this, but something somewhat different. This strategic plan is scheduled to end in totality 2027. So our team's thought is January 2026, at a minimum, we need to begin what is our next course of action. And so just something for us as a team to think about where we want to go after the current strategic plan. It'll be January 2026 before we know it.
Board Member Crossed it.
Yeah, a quick comment. On goal number two, where you were looking at breaking it down, I, I think the idea of breaking it down might still be not necessarily in changing the goal, but just to granulate that, to look for root causes, especially when the disparities are so big. I wouldn't necessarily abandon looking at that data to see, you know, where we can find solutions. Thank you.
Okay, I think you have another presentation?
Yes, we do.
All of that or just one presentation?
Yeah, well, but this one really feeds off of that one, so a lot of it is very relevant. So, so this one is particularly in connection with interim goals that are goals for the strategic plan goals that we just talked about, but also the six guardrails as well. And so you guys know from having these, these meetings that they're typically once a month, there's a presentation about the progress on the interims. So we know that, as Superintendent Murphy just said, the strategic plan goals expire in June of 2027, which is two school years work. But the goals, the, the interims for the goals and guardrails were set in a short period of time from start to finish, and those have all expired. So we have to have new Xs and new Ys for much of that. And so what I want to quickly do is go through each one of the strategic plan goals and show you what that looks like. And so the next slide shows us for goal number one, and you can skip that slide because we've kind of talked about the requests already. So for this slide, new interim goals, this one deals specifically with third grade reading. The way the original interim goals were written, if you look in the document that showed all of those, it was following a first grade cohort of students, but those first grade students have now already taken the test. So there needs to be a new interim goal. And so leadership's really, I think thoughtful idea that makes a lot of sense around this is we can't go back and start with a new first grade group because if we do, the strategic plan is going to expire before that group would even take the third grade test. You could look at second graders, but then again, you're, you're losing some of the impetus, we feel, to actually measure, as Board Member Lindy pointed out, the idea of looking at the group of students that's actually taking the test and building on that. Since the entire plan expires sooner than later now, the idea would be look at this year, so school year 26, that would be, the 26 means the, the ending of this school year. Look at the third grade students for this school year, measure the X based on how they do on the fall, I read the assessment, and then look at how they actually ended up in the spring. The reason why we have A, B, and C is the original interim goals were written to measure for, for A, all third grade students, for B, third grade black students, and for C, third grade Hispanic students. And then the idea would be look at the progress of this year's third graders, and then a year from now, figure out the pluses and the minuses, the strategies that Superintendent Murphy said are already being talked about, and then start the process again a year from now for the final year of the strategic plan with the actual third graders in that year. But again, keep in mind that all of the interim goals are, they're expired. So they, they have to be readjusted because they're, they're no longer relevant. So if we go to goal number two, you see a similar process here. The way this was written originally was kind of following a cohort of students. The idea here would be look at this year's sixth graders, look at multiracial, black, Hispanic, and look at the increases that need to occur based on how they do in the fall. Logically, if they're all increasing, then that would help reduce the gap. And so this could very easily, with the ideas that have been given, we, we could show the data for this one and actually pull out the gap at the end for multiracial versus white, black versus white, and Hispanic versus white, and keep the strategic plan goal the same if that's what you all desire. This process would be repeated a year from now with the 26, 27 sixth grade students. Goal number three, same idea. Now this one shrinks if you go back and look at the interim goals that were originally written. There were three for Algebra. That's because it was following cohorts of students. One was a sixth grade cohort, one was a seventh grade cohort, and those have phased out. The idea here again would be take this year's Algebra I students for first time test takers and look at how they do and then measure, as the original interim goal had, it was black students' progress, and then we would repeat that a year from now as well. First time Algebra I test takers for that one. Goal four. This one, not really recommending any changes in cohorts because they're not following a cohort, would say that interim goal D is one near and dear to my heart from the career tech side of things. A recommendation that we would make in changing the focus of that interim goal is if you remember, the strategic plan for CCP and workforce credentials is an OR goal, but the way that the workforce credential piece has been calculated from the beginning of the strategic plan was looking at the percentage of students in career tech courses, which is really not a true indicator of who is earning at least 12 industry credential points. And so our recommendation would be to look directly at industry credential attainment. There are students who are not in career tech courses who are earning industry credentials. And so this gives a more true picture of the students who are earning credentials regardless of whether they're in a career tech course. And then goal number five is looking at graduation. For this one, we would recommend following the same methodology as before, following a cohort, looking at this year's 11th grade students and following them out for the two years to make the biggest impact with that group, which would be the class of 2027, believe it or not. So those are the goals. I don't know if we want to pause there before we go to the guardrails or just go through the guardrails and then?
Does anyone have any questions? Or would you like to see the whole entire presentation and then ask questions? What do you think? Hearing nothing.
I have no preference.
Okay. I say keep going.
Okay, sure.
So then, Mr. Turner, I don't think we have to read each of the guardrails?
Yeah. Yeah, these will go very quickly. So if you remember the guardrails, I'm not going to read through these. We just put them in there for your reference so we can go to the next slide. For the guardrails, those do have, many of them do have a number for the X part, and that was the last number that was presented to you in these meetings last school year. Again, the not many changes with this. It's again going from X to Y, no recommended changes other than closely following the X to the Y to see what adjustments would need to be made for the biggest growth possible. Guardrail number two looks at disciplinary treatment. We can go straight to the number on that. Again, this is an X to a Y, no, no recommended changes with that other than following the Xs to the Ys. Guardrail three, next slide, please. Guardrail three is looking at our responses on the district survey. The idea here would be when that survey is given in September to have the X based on the actual enrollment for this school year with our parents. And hopefully we'll get a good report on our first day enrollment, but we know we're always losing parents and gaining parents, so no change in the focus of those. Guardrail number four is about resources. I do have a comment on this one as we go to the next slide. You may remember that in the spring, in the spring presentation, 3A, I'm sorry, 4A was not an issue. That one deals with the suppliers meeting diversity criteria who receive the RFP solicitations. But what used to be interim goal B ended up adding to more than 100%, if you remember that conversation from that meeting. So what Chief Burkhard and his staff have looked at is what we, what we can do with this one is actually split that interim goal B into the three pieces that the previous administration was using to, to lump together in one goal. And what that did is inevitably it would be more than 100%, which did not make a lot of sense to people. So this one actually is looking at diversity based on local businesses, diversity based on minority owned, and diversity based on women owned. And so we do have that recommendation for that one. If we can go to guardrail five. This one is about chronic absenteeism, no real change. On this one, the numbers that you're seeing is what was last reported. Again, the idea- Again, the idea would be to measure the students for this year and look for increases. And then the final one, guardrail number six, is all about our partnerships and community access. 3A, we were at 100% already for the percent of schools with an active LSDMC. And so in that one, it's to maintain that because we're already at 100%. B, however, that's the last number that was reported, and again, a Y needs to be set, but that's part of the entire process to have to revise these. So that concludes that. Again, keep in mind that all of the interims expired already, so we do have to have new targets for those.
Board Member Craig?
Again, I'll try to kind of run through just a few thoughts here real quick and then to be brief. I appreciate bringing in the new X and Ys. I think that's also helpful to Board Member Lindy's point, as we're thinking about what are we setting as a goal for Superintendent as well. It makes a lot more sense if we know where we are and to set that next goal based on that. And so that's, I think that would be really helpful once we kind of have those numbers in as well. The one thing I wanted to, I wanted to mention also with regards to the career tech and industry-related, I think you're correct that I think we were measuring, and this is because it's the only number we really had to do, was how many people were enrolled in a career tech program, right? And that does not necessarily get us to industry's credentials, and especially in certain areas where there's career tech, where there's not necessarily the same industry credential present. So I do think it is helpful for us to maybe, as we explore what that means and how students are getting those industry credentials, how that fits into also our overall career tech programming. And I think that's going to be something that we would have to, we may have to revision the goal if that's something where we say it's not something measurable in the way we originally thought about it. Because we spend most of that time really focused on, are you enrolled in a class that would get you credit at the state level, not necessarily the industry part of that credential? So I appreciate you raising that point. The third thing that I wanted to mention, and I think it has, is the guardrail three, I know we had this discussion about, we've switched actually how we were measuring the climate and like the surveying tools. And so our original goal was built off of the previous set of survey tools. I don't know if we've made any actual change to that goal, nor have we kind of had that discussion around, what does that goal mean, given we're using a different method to survey and gather information? So like comparing what we did with the previous tool to what we're using now may not be the most accurate way, because we may not be getting the same results, the numbers, and we may not be asking the same questions.
And actually, to address that, so Brian Searson, who does the Qualtrics, which changed from, you know, Panorama to that, has analyzed, so there were some additional questions that were added that were, in essence, not duplicating what was on Panorama, but trying to get to the same ideas. So we actually have a meeting scheduled early next week to see what progress he's made with that, but he feels very confident that the actual, when you look at the ongoing data, the questions that were added really are already being asked in the other part of the survey, but then it's kind of level-setting that to make sure that that really is occurring. So I have a meeting with him and Chief Gollihue to go through that conversation early next week. That's a great point, because we did have to switch from the Panorama to.
And again, I think this gets a little bit to the point that Board Member Matt made earlier, which is that like if we're measuring off of a different set of data, like at some point, we need to level-set.
True.
So if that is now that we're level-setting to say, this is what we've done through one year, we know this is a new expectations based on that.
Right.
Then that's fine to do. The last thing I will raise, I think absenteeism is one we haven't really discussed as much as we probably should in some ways, and the educational aspect of it, because I think this is an important part, too. We heard from several of our Hispanic families over the last year that that has been a contributor. You know, some of our federal politics have been a contributor to whether or not our students are arriving to school. And I think that's just something that is a, for this year, we do need to think about and address into whether or not that will affect how we achieve that goal. Because if we are seeing a pattern of students who are not attending school at certain times of year because of certain reasons, we may not hit that absentee number, because we are always so very, very close. Because it only takes, what, like 17 school days, really? If you miss 17 school days for the whole year, you're chronically absent. So, you know, again, child gets sick, child has doctor's appointments, whatever the case may be, that affects that. And so it's just another goal, another interim guardrail that I think, given our current political climate, that didn't exist when we made the interim guardrail. It just may be helpful for us to revision and rethink about that one. So those are my notes.
Thank you. Board Member Crossit?
It's Brian, who's the Qualtrics guy?
Yes.
Yeah, I had a conversation with him in the hallway, and just confirm this, but I believe that he was able to preserve all the questions from Panorama. We have, that was data that we were allowed to own. So I think there is an ability to have it be apples-to-apples in a survey, and then if there are additional questions, that could be some augmentation to the survey. But I believe that we have all the exact questions, so that should be able to have some ability to compare that apples-to-apples.
Yeah, and I think also, one of the things that he pointed out to me is that.
For what that's worth.
Yeah, well, you make a good point, because the, one of the things that I think he's realized is in the, kind of in the rush to go from not Panorama to what we're using, there were some questions added, but then when you go back and you look at the questions that are already in there, the added questions are sometimes skipped by people because they feel like they already answered that question. So that's what he's doing, is trying to make sure, are we still hitting the same ideas that we had before, but not repeating things that people are just going to say, I'm not going to do this?
Any other questions? Board Member Lindy?
Not a question, just a couple of comments. I think big picture, I would just ditto everything I said earlier, I won't repeat all that, but that there's an important opportunity to make all of these kinds of adjustments in line with the Superintendent's eval coming up in a couple of weeks. I think we should do that. I appreciate Superintendent you flagging that the current strategic plan will expire at the end of 26, 25?
27.
Not even close, 27, okay. But if it expires 27 in 26 would be the time that we would want to be thinking about a new one, and that that's only a couple of months away. Is that, I think that's why I was thinking of 26. I got it, okay. I just think it's worth noting, like, we have a lot of legacy systems that we are running with that come from earlier times. The whole idea of goals and guardrails is from the Council of Great City Schools. We canceled that contract. The board was not willing to continue a coaching arrangement with them. I think we should ask whether that's still the right model for us as we approach 2026. The reason I think that matters for this current school year is like, if it's not going to be something we're going to use long-term, or if it's not something we're going to do with rigor and fidelity, we should not pretend, and we should do something else with rigor and fidelity, and we have a chance to do that this year. Similarly, a lot has changed in this room, a lot has changed in this community, a lot has changed in this country over the last four years. So I don't think this will be a small difference between the past strategic plan and the next one. I think it'll be a pretty big one. And I think that, I think that we should anticipate that taking some time and taking some real investments in listening to parents and to stakeholders and to taxpayers. And where I'm going with all this is, I think that might counsel us to be, I'm trying to think of the right word, maybe sparing or somewhat narrow in the ambitions we set for this next school year. If we're going to do a big reboot on a big new strategic plan, and if we have a bunch of legacy things that we're not really doing anymore, like, let's make this upcoming school year really simple, and just focus on a very small number of really important goals, really focus on them and do them while we invest in a broader learning and listening plan to create the next kind of big version. So this is just things to think about between now and when we lock the Superintendent's goals for this school year.
Thank you. Board Member Matt?
Yeah, so something that just caught my attention is for interim goals for guardrail number six, and it says the percent of schools with an active LSDMC will maintain at 100% through May 2027. I guess I'm curious to know, how are we assessing that, and how, I guess the statement that stands out to me that says will maintain at 100%, given the fact that we have not fully held active LSDMCs at all of our schools? So I guess the language here and the context here would be important for me to understand this interim goal.
So as I'm learning all of this, I asked the same question. So the way that this has been calculated since the beginning, the way it was explained to me is that LSDMCs that submitted rosters of members when they were asked, and so to follow that same protocol, which I think everybody has been trying to do from the administration that started the strategic plan to the current, is that the rosters that are submitted, if 100% of the schools submit a roster, then that is an active LSDMC. So it's that same prot, I'm not saying that's the right protocol, but that's the protocol that was done throughout. I asked the same question, what does active mean? And that's what has been used. I think what was presented to you all earlier in the school year at the beginning was a number of like 90-some percent, and that was because there were one or two LSDMCs who did not submit a roster, but all LSDMCs have submitted a roster, and that was the way this was measured from the previous administration through.
Thank you for sharing that context.
Yes.
I think what is highlighted, for me at least, is that this is an area that needs to be fleshed out more, because again, we don't want to have goals where we're being passive with how we are meeting the targets, but we want to make sure that we're being thoroughly and very intentional about making sure that whatever goal we set, we're being intentional, accountable, and responsible for reaching that goal.
And to that point, and I cast no suspicion on anybody, but having you sign a roster is different than an active and engaging LSDMC. And so what I don't want to have, to Board Member Matt's point, that I think she's saying very delicately, is it needs to be, maybe we need to relook at some of these to ensure that what we're asking for is being met, and if it's not being met, we don't want numbers just to say that it's being met. I remember, we looked at one of these goals, and it was like, every, every school will have an engaging parent organization, and the parent organization was considered when two people get together. Now, that's not a parent organization to me, and so, but that was how it was defined. So we may need to, again, in our efforts to redefine some of these, and we have an opportunity to do that, kind of look at what we're asking for and get a realistic number. Rather than put pressure on the number, it needs to be with fidelity and integrity. So this is, this is the time we're going to be able to do that.
And I would, I would, as a person who was very familiar with the strategic plan anyway, I would, what I think to look to the future would be very helpful is not just what is the goal, but how is that, like, what does active mean, and what are, what are the evidences of, whatever it may be, it could be building baskets, like, what does that actually mean? And what is the actual data protocol for measuring that? So I totally understand what you're saying.
Yeah, when we went through this very arduous process, it wasn't about getting to the number as much as it was the district moving in a direction that defines us based off of these goals and guardrails. And if we didn't, if we were at 62%, but there was a robust 62%, then what measures need to be taken, rather than, okay, we're at 100%, because we got two people standing there, holding hands, singing kumbaya, so. Any other questions? Board Member Crossit, you had one, I'm sorry.
I think it's been answered, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything else from you?
No, I'm done.
Superintendent?
So for Monday, what we will bring back is the, so that was due to be posted today, the historical data, in order for you to be able to inform your conversation, so is, so that didn't get posted today. So what would your expectation be to have that information?
So Board Members, what are you, as we move towards redefining some of these goals and guardrails, we've asked for historical perspective, that was one ask of one of our colleagues. What are you wanting to see on Monday for us to make some informed movement towards decisions? If we don't need it, we are, I'm happy to skip over it, it's going to still remain on the agenda, because I want to keep it forethought, but what is it that you need for Monday's discussion, and we can get the administration to bring it back?
So I would maybe say it this way, and this is maybe a little bit to where Board Member Lindy was going. I think there's space for you to say that your staff's goals are achieved greater than what our goals and guardrails currently look like. You know, in theory, as you would be potentially increasing them, you know, like, again, like, some may go up 4% or some may go up 5% as their targets. I think there's a lot of space for you to be able to have that conversation with your team to say, look, I know they set the goal here, but my goal remains right here, and like being able to kind of guide that, because invariably, if they meet that goal, you meet your goal, right? So I think there is space for that to be done. I don't know that we need all the historical data to be perfectly set up for Monday, because I think that is a short timeframe to come around to. But our, I think our next meeting is less than two weeks from that. I think it's the first week of September, and so, or the 8th, I should say, not the first week, because first week is Labor Day, but by that 8th, being able to see what that potentially looks like now, as we also are able to kind of program out and think about some of the Ys that may be able to be filled in, given we already know what the Xs are, right? So like, I think as a, you're bringing something to us, I think it'd be better to bring something that's more complete of a picture that we could then be able to digest, than it be like a piecemeal of like, we can do these data numbers right now, but this point, we can't wait, this part, we can't wait. But I would say to all of that to say, I love the idea of making staff, or holding staff to a, to a level to perform above the floor, because I think in some ways, that's the one thing I've always worried about with our goals and guardrails, is that it became the floor, and that that's all we were worried about doing, is meeting the floor, the bottom threshold.
Board Member Lindy?
I think I just want to co-sign what Member Craig was saying, that I'm not in a rush to do it Monday. The 8th sounds, sounds fine. I really, really want to agree with the idea of doing this holistically, not in pieces, so we can see the big picture. I'm all for having fewer of these, if we can get the list down. I do think we have to sync it up with evaluation, which makes me want to delay it even more until we have the final state numbers. But if people who know more about this than I do feel like, no, we really know, like, we're within like a reasonable confidence interval, like where this is going to land, and we can do this now, I'm fine to give it a try and see how it goes. But I think, I think my request would be, I really need time with this stuff ahead of time. And so I think to be able to have, here's what we, what we used to have, here's the set of changes we're making, or we're recommending. set of changes we're making, or we're recommending, here's our rationale for why those changes are the things that we're gonna recommend, and here's how that would link up to what the superintendent is gonna be held accountable for. And to be able to sit, I would, I would need like, I don't know, multiple business days, like a week if possible, but like, at least, at least two or three days to look at that, think about that, just figure out what questions I have, and then we come talk about it together. And I'm, I'm all for like, if, this is like one of the most important discussions we're gonna have all year. If we need to scoot other stuff out of the agenda, or have a different kinder time of meeting for that kind of thing, where we aren't trying to watch the clock and manage all the other stuff, like, I'm in, like, I'll, I'll 100% come for that. But that, that would be my request.
Great, thank you. Board Member Weinberg?
And I think just for me, I'm adding, having accurate information in the data points, so just making sure that those are correct, so that we can come to some type of conclusion with the other additional information as well.
So Board Member Crossit?
I, I just want to keep in mind that the data, and I, this is more for the, maybe the administration to think about, but the data really should be the starting point of a conversation, not the ending point of conversation. In my view, sure, we have goals, and we want to achieve those goals, but it's really the conversation that we have around why we did or did not achieve those goals that's gonna be important, I think, as, as we go through these discussions in the next couple of meetings. So for whatever that's worth, it may be September 8th, you got a little more color commentary around, you know, where those, where those numbers fall and why. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So I will, I will share that my suggestion to the administration, the superintendent, was when I saw that we had a large number of slides, was that things are chunked a little bit more succinctly. Recognizing that she does have an evaluation in October, I'm asking the policy committee, is, is, why did we land on October versus in the same alignment as the other staff versus December? Was that, because that's, that was in the, it's in the policy and.
Can you say it one more time? I missed the beginning.
So our policy, which is new for the public around the superintendent evaluation, is that she gets evaluated in an October, correct?
We, we, we have to approve her eval for the previous school year in the first meeting in October. And then that's, good.
I apologize, so I'm wondering, where did we land since the adminis, the other administration, like, the rest of the district, the principals, et cetera, are late December for evaluations? Or is it, is it December? Where did we land on?
I think the difference here, Dr. Moffett, is this is from my evaluation for '24, '25. What I'm talking about today with the staff is their '25, '26.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm just wondering, I was, I, I suggested to them that we give her some latitude and some direction for her October evaluation, which is why this is on the agenda now, and I told her, anything that's going to potentially impact you for your evaluation in October, we need to be talking about this now. The board does not need to have a first view of something that's not met or met in Sep, the end of September. So that's the reason why there was my suggestion to not wait and to kind of chunk these things on what is urgent, what is absolutely important to you that we see was either met or you can't met, or it doesn't make sense to you from a, from a goals, guardrails standpoint, because we offered her the opportunity to redo some of those when she came on, and we just have not done that. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, we, we did reset them, like, Mr. Crossit and I met with the superintendent, and we did the, I remember, it was, it was, it was a genuine challenge, because I think the, the, the timing was suboptimal, but I think people did the best that they could, given the timing that we did have, I think.
Okay.
I, I agree with that.
Okay, I could be, I could be off. Board Member Craig?
I think, I think to your original question, though, I think the October date for us doing that process was in line to, because the data from the state does not come down until September. And what we were generally trying to do is to, doesn't mean it has to be in October, it could be the last meeting of September, if it came down earlier, something to that effect.
Okay.
But the idea was that we didn't want to do the new evaluation without the information for the previous one, and we didn't have the information for the previous one, because the state won't send it down earlier until, to September, which does pull her out of the normal cycle.
Okay.
For the rest of the staff, which I think was to Superintendent's point, is that the rest of the staff, she does have to kind of give guidance to, to get them going on their path. It, it definitely is, I think that's one of those things that we, we've talked about several times, that the state numbers creates the weird, out of cycle, or out of normal cycle for the superintendent's position specifically.
So that was the reason why I suggested to her, like, let's start this process early so that we can get some understanding of where the board is wanting to go, so that by the time her evaluation comes in October, she's got a clearer direction of what the board is thinking. So when you say wait until September, I was suggesting, and I'm happy to be wrong and not speak for the board, but I was suggesting that we talk about this and give her some idea and feedback early on because of that.
Yeah, I, I think there, there are parts of that that I completely agree with, and there are parts of it, I don't know whether we agree or disagree, we may be saying the same thing. I think some of what's on the goals and guardrails does not depend on ODEW's data. Like, like there are surveys, there are LSDMC pieces, like, all, all of those things we could do much earlier, you know, and I think that makes a ton of sense. I think we can do some of that in exec session, I, I don't mind doing some of it in, in community hall meetings, that, that feels totally appropriate. So I, I think I agree. I do want to, I would argue that we wait on all of the student achievement outcomes until we have final data. Like, I just, we can, we can have an early version, I guess, but like, I'm gonna suspend judgment until we see what the final numbers are. The other thing I would just note in here too is, I think if we had a smaller number of goals and guardrails, it would make sense to make all of them a part of the superintendent's evaluation. We have a lot of goals and guardrails, particularly if you look at how they're written. And so one of the things that Mr. Crossit and the superintendent and I, when we met, did was narrow to a smaller number, so that for school year '24, '25, what the superintendent is accountable for is not actually the full set of all of these things, it's a smaller number. So that, again, I, I think we may agree on all of this, but that, that's, that's what my response was.
Got it. All right. Did you have anything else, Mr. Craig?
Thank you.
We are cooking with grease. Do any, do any board members have any items for other business? Is there anything you would like to see for Monday's meeting? We should be getting some good first day data, first day of school data. Look at this, look, this is awesome. If you want some smiles and laughs and giggles, look at the screen. We are, we are CPS, back to school, a new era in education. Happy first day, everybody, let's give everybody a round of applause. Does anyone have any tales of the first, like, what do we call it when we did our tour, a tale of CPS, a day in the life of CPS? Anyone have any first day clapping tales? Board Member Weinberg?
So I'm just gonna say that it was a pleasure just being able to see all of the children and the kids, excited, especially the junior high kids, to be at their new schools, to start the first day. I did participate alongside Superintendent, and of course, President Moffett, in a, I think the first stop was South Avondale, and then Ethel Taylor, I also went to Fairview, and then also Evanston. So it was a good first day, and I'm excited to hear from my own children how their first day was, and I'm pretty sure parents are excited to hear from their children as well.
Anything else? I will say this, kudos to Chief Burkhart and Metro and the superintendent, because Evanston, Metro has moved and put a bus stop right in front of Evanston for our students, a brand new bus stop, and that is awesome. So they don't have to cross the street or walk down the, the, the street, they can just get off right there in front of the school. So kudos to Metro for doing this for our kids, and for, thank you. It was awesome, so, it was awesome. And just kudos to everybody, because this was a, this was a big day. I know everybody's a little stressed, some people are a little bit bolder. Board Member Craig?
I, I just want to give a kudos to the parents, including the parents on our board here, who have endured the summer with their children, and now are able to hand them back to the school. I know that was, my sister was very excited to send my nieces and nephew back into the classroom today. But honestly, I do also want to send a lot of positive support, feedback, you know, good feelings, whatever, to all of the folks who do the other stuff in our school buildings, because they've been there also working hard these last couple of days and last weeks to get everything ready, and I, and I've seen some of the pictures that folks have posted, and some of the work that folks have been doing inside the buildings to get things ready for when the students get there. So I, you know, it's not just that we show up on day one and everything runs and is working perfectly smooth, it's that we prepared for it. So I appreciate all the hard work the folks did to prepare for day one.
Yeah, thank you. Anything, Board Member Map?
Yeah, so I did have the pleasure to attend several schools today. I, it was a busy day, being in, you know, the classroom with my own children for a point in time. My son is first grader, so that was a whole adjustment for me, that's a emotional experience, right? And then my daughter in fifth grade, she's just like, okay, I got it. But, so navigating that experience of, of mom going to other schools, it was just such a great experience to see all of the kids excited, or maybe not so much excited sometimes, you know, especially the older ones, like, okay, it's back to school, but, and then also just seeing the teachers and the principals, and as Board Member Craig said, just everyone that's helping to make today possible. You can tell that it was a lot of hard work and effort that went into that, and just making whatever adjustments are needed to make today successful was a pleasure to see. And so I had the opportunity to go to Pleasant Hill Academy, as well as Ethel Taylor and Evanston as well.
Good. This is good, this is great. So Superintendent Murphy?
I absolutely am deeply appreciative to the entire staff for making today happen. I am not at all aware of any bus issues at all, so super appreciative. But I really especially want to thank the community today, because they showed up and truly demonstrated being a village for our children and our families. They looked amazing, they were up and out and about very early, and I'm deeply appreciative of that support.
This was a great day. So it is also the last Student Achievement Committee of the Hall for Treasure Wagner. So she, she's just gonna have to be mad, she's getting all these kudos right now. So do you want to say anything in your last secaw?
So yes, this is the last of everything. So today I had the pleasure of covering the central office while everybody else went out to the schools, and I, I had a really good time chatting it up with the families and talking to the kids and playing with them, and they just, everybody seemed very positive. It was a good experience. Tony Fields, I think they went, when I walked through at 3 o'clock, they'd already, they were on their 560-some ticket, so that's how many people had done transfers or enrollments, and they were, they kept going. They were, they were cranking it through, they, Tony Fields is doing a good job.
Wow. And thank you to our customer care team, because they've been busy, 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 offered to help, and I think they said yes until they realized who it was, and I'm like, no, 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 I really will help. But thank you to everybody today. We are going to go into executive session to discuss employment of a public official, and I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Treasure Wagner, please call roll.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Crossit?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Map?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Moffett?
Yes. Everyone have a good night. Thank you.